We might as well get started in seven o'clock. Um, for those of you that weren't here when I introduced myself, my name is Sally Short. I am the Senate caucus aide for the Democratic Caucus. In the state senate and we are joined today by our Addison District Senators. So if you guys want to introduce yourself, uh, we can get started and I think you might give a little update on the committees that you're working on and legislation that you all are debating about.
Sure. So I'm still old fashioned, ladies before gentlemen, you can tell me that's wrong, but Ruth, you want to go first?
Okay, sure. Good, uh, good evening, everyone. It's really great to see you all. Thank you for joining us. And it's especially, as I was saying, so exciting to see three Ruths on the screen. But all of you, it's exciting to see your faces. Thanks for joining us. Um, I'm Ruth Hardy. I'm one of the two state senators that represents the Addison District. And I'm joining you from East Middlebury where I live with my family. And I, um, in the senate, we serve on two legislative committees. Um, in the morning on, I serve on the Health and Welfare Committee where I'm the vice chair. And in the afternoon, I, um, serve on the Finance Committee, um, along actually with Senator Bray. So Addison, the district is well represented in the world of finance. But in the Health and Welfare Committee, we are doing a lot of really important bills. But first I wanted to tell you about a big bill that we all passed last week called the Budget Adjustment Act. Usually the Budget Adjustment Act is a sleepy kind of bill that just adjusts the current year's budget and makes technical changes. But this year it was a pretty comprehensive bill with a lot of funding in it. In order to especially shore up, um, community, um, healthcare and hu- human services areas. And it included over $60 million for workforce retention and recruitment grants for employers. And those were specifically for things like healthcare, um, our designated agency, mental health services, home health and hospice, childcare, and a lot of the areas that are really struggling right now. It also included significant amount of money, money for housing as well as a whole host of other things. So it was quite a big bill and took a little bit longer than normal, but, um, we passed it last week and I believe it's on the way to the governor's desk. We've also passed major housing bills and we have another large housing omnibus bill on the way. In health and welfare, um, we're working on a number of things, um, including, um, a bill about hospital sustainability and global payments for hospitals. Um, and this is a very complicated, um, area, healthcare financing, but it will include, um, a robust community engagement process, um, that hopefully all of you will be able to join in as we talk about this in Addison County and how to make our healthcare system more sustainable and lead and more, um, affordable for all of us. And we also have passed a bill, um, that I was a co-sponsor of about planning and care for people with Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer's is a disease that impacts a, a large number of Vermonters. And this bill will hopefully improve our planning process, make it more integrated into other healthcare planning and planning, planning for the aging. And also with a specific, um, uh, focus on support for families impacted by Alzheimer's. Uh, we also passed a bill about parent-child centers. Parent-child centers are centers, um, that provide childcare, but also support for families who are, um, uh, need more support to raise their children, often young parents, teen parents, um, and parents living in poverty. Um, and this would be a, a bill that would provide funding for parent-child centers, but also, uh, provide a more structure for the parent-child network. There are 14 of them around the state, including one in Addison County, the Parent-Child Center in Middlebury. So, uh, we're also working on a bill about mental health peer respite centers and being able to create more peer respite centers for people experiencing mental health challenges. And also a bill about student mental health, among many other, but those are some of the highlights. In the afternoon, the, the thing I wanted to talk to you about that I've spent more than, uh, a, a ton of time on over the past year is, um, in the Finance Committee, we're working on a bill that would overhaul the way that we fund our, uh, our, our schools, not the way that we, the formula we use to fund our schools in order to provide more support and, and, um, taxing capacity for local schools that have, um, students living in poverty, English language learners, um, that, um, are supporting small schools in very rural areas of the state. And also a, additional, um, capacity for middle school and high school students. Um, this is based on research done by, um, a team of researchers at UVM and Rutgers University that showed that these students are more expensive to, um, educate and therefore we need to shift our, um, the way that we wait these students. So, uh, in shorthand, we call it the pupil waiting bill. Um, so I've been working, taking the lead on that, um, and happy to get in the weeds with any of you who want to. Just really quickly before I turn it over to Senator Bray, we also are working on reapportionment this year, which is redistricting. After the 2020 census, we have to redistrict all of our, um, senate and, and, uh, house seats. Um, and that bill is in the works, although we are not clo- done yet. And finally, we are working on a bill that just passed out of our Government Operations Committee last week about teacher and state worker pensions. Um, our pension system was sort of in a cra- it is kind of in a crises and we're working to overhaul that to make sure that our pension funds are sustainable into the future. So I am happy to answer questions about these things and other things, but for now I'm going to turn it over to Senator Bray to talk about his work. So, thank you.
Uh, thanks Senator Hardy. Um, and, um, so I look forward to someday when we get, uh, to do more of this in person again. And but for now, it's pretty great that anywhere, anyone can beam into a meeting and there, there is a positive side to all that. And so I also just want to pause and say hello to people that I really have hardly seen in two years. So like Ellen and well Linda Moore, because she's a neighbor, uh, Nate and Mike Fisher, who I see from time to time, Debbie, Susan. I'm going down the screen, Adarla, um, Sally, I see Linda Harmon, who I haven't seen in person for a long time. I see Chris Winters, and I'm not sure if that's our Deputy Secretary, uh, Chris Winters, but if it is, great to see you. Great candidate for the secretary position for the year coming and, uh, Anna Rose Benson, Barb Wilson. So I, I know I'm not getting everyone, but, um, good to see you all. And look forward to doing it in person. So, uh, as, as Ruth has mentioned, I serve with her and five other senators on finance in the afternoons. My mornings, uh, which is really where I've put, hope my part of heart and soul in the last eight years has been sharing senate natural resources and energy, because this is an area where we're seeing huge challenges, uh, in that form of climate change, for instance, and huge opportunities at the same time. So, um, I'll, I'm going to focus my remarks there. And happy to talk about other things too, or go into more detail on what we've been doing. So everyone knows we're receiving a lot of federal money and through a variety of, um, different, um, bills that have come out of Congress. And the good news is for the natural resources world is that we're receiving, um, unprecedented levels of funding for, uh, their, especially for our clean water work, which is very expensive. When you start replacing wastewater treatment facilities, um, sewer systems, et cetera. It, it's a very expensive proposition and so we're going to be able to bring money to the table to help count towns around Addison County to address clean water issues that will help us clean up our streams more and clean up the lake that they all flow into. We have challenges that are going to take a long time to turn around, but we're really getting a big boost out of, uh, federal funding on clean water work. We started last year, uh, a weatherization for all program. Some people call it weatherization at scale. We've had for 20 plus years, a great low-income weatherization program in the state of Vermont. But it tends to serve people in like Addison County income terms. It's only been available to people making roughly $36,000, $38,000 and less. And that program comes in and does a complete energy audit and then looks at, um, weatherizing your home. But also looks at health-related hazards and it looks at, for instance, do you have vermiculate for insulation anywhere? You have a leaky roof that would make it, um, would spoil the effort of weatherizing when you're going to have water coming in. So it's a holistic look at housing and addressing, uh, housing and energy costs for, uh, lower income Vermonters. So it's great that we have that program, but we know that there are lots of people with incomes above $36,000 or so that would love to do more on weatherization. So the program is seeking to, is already, um, working to address more middle, uh, income Vermonters, bringing more services to them to make it more affordable. And I think everyone knows the story, you know, when we buy fossil fuels to heat, um, and we are a very fossil fuel dependent state uh, for our heating needs, um, we ship that money out of state. And when we weatherize, we reduce our costs. And the pathway to reducing those costs means we're hiring neighbors to come in and do that work. And so it's a money saver for Vermonters. It also, weatherization well done, also improves indoor air quality. And we've learned a lot over the last five years about how the, the health benefits of better indoor air quality. People, the, miss less work, kids miss less school, um, incomes go up and healthcare costs go down. There, in fact, there are places now in Vermont where weatherization is being prescribed under Medicare because it is more cost-effective to fix the indoor air quality issues, um, of a home than it is to see someone, um, come back to a hospital time and time again. So, uh, for, for pulmonary issues usually. So that's, uh, we're aiming to double and double again what we're doing on weatherization. And that will, um, take our current target, our current status, which is roughly 30,000 homes in the last 20 years and push it all the way to 120,000 homes by the end of the decade. So it's an ambitious program, but we've, um, again, we've received federal funding that's letting us step up. Uh, we went from roughly 2,000 homes a year ago to 3,000 this year. We're aiming to go closer to 4,000 in the coming year and then to keep on growing that number over the years so we can get more and more work done. So I went on a little bit of length there, but that's because to me, it's such a solid investment for, uh, buy Vermonters in other Vermonters, you know, it's like, we save energy, we save money, we reduce the, the emissions that are driving climate change. So it's, um, it truly is a win-win-win. It's not just one of those cliched terms. And then I'll just talk about one other thing, there's more going on, but, um, environmental justice. So we just passed an environmental justice bill, S148 is the number. It recognizes that state benefits, uh, don't go evenly to Vermonters all around the state. And, you know, you, one way that you can see it is in that a town that has, um, a, uh, a bigger sort of, uh, town office with grant writers is more capable of pulling in grant money to do good work than a smaller town without anyone to do that grant writing. So there's like natural, that, that's one small example of many things that tend to sort of fall out, uh, along the lines of those who are, uh, better served are good at getting better served. And there are populations that tend to get less service and we want to be able to, uh, see that more clearly and recognize it and then make adjustments so that we treat people more fairly and equitably. Don't sort of accidentally continue to disadvantage populations. So, uh, what we're really talking about in concrete terms is that lower income Vermonters tend to get less service as, uh, people of, uh, minority communities, so members who are Vermonters who are either black, indigenous or people of color, as well as people who have limited, uh, English language proficiency. So that might be more typically, you know, like immigrants who are less capable of engaging and using community services and government services. So the program, um, uh, with a bill we just passed says that every state, uh, agency over time needs to see how it's spending its money, inventory at first, then address who's receiving those and then put together, uh, a plan for making sure that they reach out to communities that are underserved and make corrections in that. And that is going to be, you know, um, I would say a decade of work to make that real and to make that the new default for how we do our work. But I think it's a really long overdue change and I think it's going to, um, make Vermont a more just and fair and balanced place to live. So I'll stop there and, um, say, thanks very much for sending me off to Montpelier. It's a, it's the most, uh, exciting and challenging job I've ever had and I love doing the work. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think because we are a smaller group tonight that traditionally I would have people put their, uh, questions in the chat and then moderate it that way. But I think because we're a small group, uh, if people just want to use the raise your hand function on Zoom to ask a question, um, we can just kind of do a roundtable. But to start, uh, there were a couple of questions in the chat, so I'll start with those. Um, from Nathan, "The federal government will give a 40% tax credit when you convert to either propane, natural gas, or electricity. Does Vermont provide a tax incentive for this or are the incentives only for new vehicles?"
I'm looking for that question so I make sure I understood it. I'm not seeing the same chat, I guess, that you are. Um, can, can you restate the question Nate? So I make sure I heard it properly?
Sure, you know, when you go out and buy a new EV, you get, but a, a federal tax credit, you, you can get a state tax credit. There is also in the federal plan, a system where you can get an aftermarket alternative fuel vehicle tax of up to 40% of the project, where you take your gasoline engine and convert it to either propane, natural gas, or turn it to electric. And I wanted to see if we do have a state program, program like that. I've tried to talk to Efficiency Vermont and of course, you know, they only know about the new car deal. And if you actually look at the federal regulations, it takes you quite a while to find the aftermarket clause. So I'm not sure if it's just something that's being missed because it's new or if it's, you know, something that needs to be addressed, because you can get a lot farther ahead if you can convert a lot of the vehicles that are already on the road to another fuel instead of waiting to go through the whole point, process of putting them through the scrapyard and scrapping them out and buying a new Tesla or whatever. So this could get us where we need to go and lower the carbon footprint quite a bit in the, in the direction as well as speed it up.
Right. Well, so thanks for that question. Um, and we are, there is, it's a little awkwardness because although we're the Energy Committee and we would like to manage more things related to energy, including transportation energy, there is also a Transportation Committee and they, they, they have their own way of looking at things. So we're working with the Transportation Committee and one of the things that we have bringing to their attention is exactly what you're saying. It's like, it's great that we have incentives for new EVs, um, but the average, well, two-thirds of the cars sold in Vermont are used cars. And, um, they tend to stay on the road for 11 years. So if you don't look at the, uh, the used car market, you're leaving a lot of people behind and, uh, unprovided for in terms of, um, trying to reduce emissions, participate in that sort of clean energy future we talked about. So we're looking right now to see if we can bring incentives to exactly what you're talking about. You don't necessarily have to go to a zero emission vehicle, but what if you go from something that's burning, you know, that's 12 miles to the gallon and you can find a replacement that's 30? You, you'd still even be a gas vehicle, but you can get a substantial reduction in use. So we're trying to look at how we can craft incentives that aren't just for, um, 100% EVs. There's, I, I'm not as familiar whether or not compressed natural gas can get the same benefits. But, you know, most people end up talking about EVs. So we're looking to, um, a little bit like the weatherization, to do more for more people than just a, a, a small subset. So I don't have a complete answer, but I can follow up with my transportation colleagues, because I know that this year we have, you know, we divvy stuff up house to senate and one thing is the house is doing, um, a, uh, they are leading on transportation energy issues and the senate has agreed to follow on second. So I'll get in touch with my house colleagues and, and ask them exactly about this and then get back to you directly.
Appreciate it, because, uh, you know, now's the time, you know, I've been talking about doing my 47 Chevy. I'm getting that in the works and in the process of doing it, I've got three other people that want me to convert vehicles for them. And I, I'm looking at it going, yeah, I might as well lease my old garage that I sold and do this just as the, the, the sole purpose of the shop. So now there's definitely a need. You know, there are people around with the talent and ability to do it and it's time to get it rolling. And thank you very much.
Well, can I ask a really quick question? What's, what's the power going to be for your 47 Chevy?
I'm going to put a Tesla, uh, motor and drivetrain right in the back of it. Take the rear end right out, slap it right in there and away you go. It'll be a rat rod when you see it going down the road, but it won't be the noisy version.
Yeah, maybe you'll bring it to Bristol Parade this year.
Definitely. That's what I'm doing it for basically, so I can advertise the service, get people looking at it, you know? It's so easy to do it and when you got Ford with 200,000 orders already for an, an electric pickup truck that they haven't even built yet. It's like, the need is there.
Well, thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Um, we'll go next to the next question in the chat and then I'll go to Ellen and then Victoria. Um, but in the chat Catherine asked that she is interested to know what the legislative work on Act 39, uh, now includes. Uh, this was passed last year, I believe.
Um, actually, so the, I'll take that one. Act 39, um, was a bill that was passed, um, I think, uh, 13 years ago at this point, um, I, I believe. And it is the medical aid in dying bill that allows people to, um, end their, their life peacefully if they have been, um, diagnosed with a terminal illness, um, through the help of, uh, medication. We, uh, the senate passed a bill earlier this session that would update Act 39 and make some, uh, changes to the process. Um, there's a very long process that, um, that patients, once they're at the end of their life, need to go through in order to acquire the medication that they can use to, to end their life. Um, and it required a few things, a 48-hour waiting period, um, after they made two, two request, they have to make two requests, 15 days apart, and then there's an additional 48-hour waiting period. They also, um, were not able to make their request via telemedicine. And there was also, um, some, uh, concerns and confusion about, um, liability issues for medical providers that were not physicians, like nurses or hospice care workers that may be, um, involved in the process. So what the bill, um, S74 does is that it, um, eliminates the final 48-hour waiting period. And it does allow telehealth for the request of the medicine. If, uh, the provider, um, has, um, deemed that it is medically, um, okay to do it via telehealth, clinically, um, appropriate. And then the final thing is it clarifies that there is not liability issues for other people involved in the process. And it makes a few other technical changes, but, um, it sort of updates the bill, um, to bring it into a post-COVID era, um, and allowing for, and it would be full video. There's not audio-only telehealth allowed, but full video and audio telehealth. Um, so that passed, um, the senate a couple of weeks ago and it is now over in the House Human Services Committee.
Can I ask more about that Ruth?
Sure.
Um, I was, uh, involved in it in Oregon and in Oregon, it had to be administered by, I think, a nurse who actually brought it to the patient, brought the liquid to the patient. Can you tell me how that works here?
Um, in Vermont, um, it is prescribed, uh, through a pharmacy and it eats, the pharmacy that, there's only one pharmacy that participates right now. And that was one of the reasons we clarified the liability issue, so more pharmacists would feel comfortable participating. The pharmacist who participates and, and provides the medication now usually delivers it himself, um, to patients or uses a courier service if he is not able to deliver it. Um, and then, um, a hospice worker is generally, um, present or a physician is generally present. But the, the patient themselves, the person themselves must take the, the medicine themselves.
Do they have to mix it up or is it all ready to go when the pharmacist brings it?
I believe it's mixed with liquid, um, but I, I don't know the specifics of that. But I, I believe it's a liquid, um, that, that a person drinks.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to Ellen.
Hey, can you hear me? Yes. Great. So I won't go into this spiel about just generally, nothing is happening, uh, since, um, in terms of the general goal, right? All, everybody included, nobody out, public financing, healthcare for all. But I will say, I did want to, since it's great that you guys are here and actually Mike, I'm glad you're here because I had something to say about two specific bills. And so the first, um, is S285, which, um, I just want to say two things, um, for people listening that the Green Mountain Care Board has come forth with a request for $5 million to do something that they say is new in healthcare. Um, I've read through the proposal. It's mostly old, same old language. You know, increase quality, maximize access and minimize costs, not a lot of new ideas. But they do say in the bill that there will be community engagement. So here is my plea. Everything that has come through, that has said community engagement, has not had it. Last summer, there was, um, legislation to create a senate task force on affordability and accessibility in healthcare. It used words like community engagement. None was given. It's given to what are called stakeholders, which usually ends up being someone like the hospitals, the insurance company, you know, the drug. Um, so I would really, really urge you, since the big picture is still not there, as you know, right? No progress toward universality. Let's at least have something written in that means that community engagement is, you know, like, like a meeting where anybody can walk in and say what their problems are, because that has not happened. And, um, in fact, with the senate, um, task forces past summer on affordability and access to healthcare, you know, people wrote letters to that task force because there was no community engagement. And they even didn't put all the letters in their appendix. They kind of, you know, changed the record. So that's my first plea. And because also with $5 million which we plan to allocate for this, if you used it, let's say it better do something because if you did direct access to healthcare for this, you could fund 50,000 teeth cleanings and 50,000 mental health therapy sessions and you could do a whole lot of direct healthcare. So if it's going to be $5 million advocated and there's going to be community engagement, I just plead that that actually be so. I, I don't think Vermonters have had that chance for a long time. And the second thing, actually Mike, I'm glad you're here, there's another bill that would, um, help people who get stuck with Medicare Advantage, which is often made to look like a good deal till somebody gets sick and then they try to get off and get back onto regular Medicare. And there are lots of barriers and one thing, and that's a great idea to make it easier. But one thing I noticed in that bill is there's no guaranteed issue. So it, you know, we have guaranteed issue for, we did that many years ago, I think, under, I don't know what governor. But there is no guaranteed issue for, uh, Medigap insurance in that bill. So somebody, it's just, uh, trying to get rid of some of the late penalties. So somebody could get quite ill, have Medicare Advantage discover too late, because you know, they, they're kind of sight stars that, um, their Medicare Advantage plan does not cover what they need. They can attempt to get back into regular Medicare, which they can do, and then they need Medigap. And I think if you could add some kind of guaranteed issue, which I think the other three or four states that have put in legislation for this have done. So that's just a kind of wonky thing, but could affect a lot of, um, people who, uh, you know, Medicare Advantage.
Okay, Ellen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, there are a lot of people who want to, and so I'm gonna answer your question. Okay, Ellen, I'm gonna cut, I'm gonna, there are a lot of people who want to answer, I'm gonna answer your questions. Um, and um, like, I'll answer them and if I need your help, I'll ask.
Yeah, I was just trying to explain.
Passion for these issues. I just want to make sure everybody who has questions.
No, that's it. I'm good. I'm good. Yeah, those are the two.
Two things um for the the audience who might not know, Mike Fisher, um, uh, who's on the screen, there he is, is our healthcare advocate. Um, and he works for um legal Vermont Legal Aid um as the advocate for regular people who are trying to access healthcare. Um, and Ellen, as I, as I said to some people, is a a expert healthcare advocate um and and follows our committee well. So um, so S two eighty five, as I mentioned at the beginning, is um a bill that would work on hospital sustainability and global payments for hospitals, um, which would um be really uh one big payment for a hospital to provide all of its services, essentially. That's the simplistic version of it. Um, and this would help move us toward that in an effort to make our hospitals more sustainable and also make it more affordable for people. There is a community engagement process. Um, and Ellen, just this afternoon, I was on a long call with our um Legislative Council Attorney about that language. I've also met with the Green Mountain Care Board and Porter Hospital and others this week to make sure that we have a really shored up language in that area. Mike knows, he and I were furiously texting during the meeting about how much it I it matters to me that we have really good community engagement. I know you felt burned in the past. I totally understand that. And I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that doesn't happen. Like, you know, I'm only one person, but I'll do the best I can. And I think Mike and I have each other's back on this part for sure. Um, and then to your point about the the um medic, the the other bill. And it is complicated and I, let me see if I get this right, Mike. There's um medit, there's uh, there's the Medicare Supplemental Plans, which are the plans that when you're sixty five, you can sign up to get. And you're supposed to keep them the whole time. Um, and you have six months to do it. And if you don't, then it's hard to get on one and it's also hard to to change to a different one. Then there's the Medicare Advantage Plans. Those are different. Those are essentially a private plan that's taking the place of Medicare. Those are federally regulated and we really can't do anything about them, the Medicare Advantage Plans. Unfortunately, the state can't regulate them. The Medicare um supplemental plans is what we're trying to ensure that there's an annual time when you can sign up for them, just like with regular insurance. And um, that's what the bill's goal is, so people don't get stuck in a Medicare Supplemental Plan. It is still in the works. I will take a look at the language that you're talking about and see what we can do. So I'm gonna, I think, leave it at that for now. And did I get anything wrong, Mike?
You got it right, but can I just, if I can just say, you know, one sentence.
Just quickly, because we got four other people with questions.
The intent of the bill is to do exactly like Ellen said, is to provide for an annual guaranteed issue open enrollment period.
Okay, yeah. So we'll make sure that language is in there. Um, we have uh another crack of the bill next week. All right. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't.
Want to, before we go on. Chime in a little on the community engagement part because that is one of the first provisions for what every operating area in government has to engage in as part of the environmental justice bill. Because environment in in the case of environmental justice is actually a very broad definition and includes all the factors that affect the health of your community, including things like transportation, housing, access to healthcare. It's not only about clean air and clean water. And just as Senator Hardy's talking about and and Ellen's talking about, uh, how well do we actually do the task of a community engagement? I would say the legislature itself and many operating areas in government have not been spectacular at it. So there's a learning curve for all of us. And that's why I said, I think it will take a decade to really make it a genuine uh way that we do all our work in government. So applaud, stop there.
Okay, great. And next on my list is Victoria.
Hi there. Um, I uh wanted to ask about the bottle bill. It was a great follow up from the House uh to the plastic bag ban. And I would really like to see it uh move forward in a timely manner. And it's been in your committee, Chris, for a while, and I'd love to hear what your plans for it, because we really need this bill.
Sure. Well, um, thanks for that. The you, as you, as people may or may not know, the roughly sixteen week legislative session is divided into two halves. And we we're actually the week we, this week, when we come back this coming Friday is that the midpoint, it's referred to as crossover. And it's an internal working agreement between House and Senate. They agree to look at any bill that we vote out that makes crossover. It leaves the committee, the originating committee by this coming Friday and vice versa. Um, if you go longer than that, then the other side can say, you know, we don't have time to look at it. You're giving it to us too late. So what both sides do is the Senate does all its own work in the first half and we ship that to make crossover. And then once, and the House does the same. And then we take what they've sent us in the first half or even last year. And then we work on it in our second half. So the bottle bill and pretty much every House bill that's come over has, for the most part, been resting respectfully on the wall because we're doing our own work first. So it's, I just want to make sure that people know that it's not like, oh, we're reluctant to work on it. You know, we did the plastics bill and we're interested in continuing to work on solid waste, which is a more challenging issue than anyone would ever rationally think about ahead of time. Once these trash brings us all together, that's all I've learned so far. The bottle bill is part of it and um we will definitely be, we're moving the bottle bill. Um, we'll take testimony, we'll uh, you know, I don't know that it will leave the Senate unchanged, but um the bill will move on. And if uh, I actually was, this is a very legislative thing to do. I went to the Redemption Center yesterday and had a half hour chat with a guy who runs the place to learn more about how the bottle bill and the proposed changes would work or not work for for his business. So um, I expect it, you, it will come out and it's, it's only been resting because we're busy doing Senate work first.
Well, that's, that's great news and um I hope it will change at least a little because um I think a five percent deposit just isn't enough to incentivize people to bring your bottles back. So I would say at least ten percent, ten cents would be a good move. So, but thank you. I'm really glad you'll be taking it up.
Right. If if we were setting the deposit on the bottle bill and we wanted to adjust for inflation, uh, because this was introduced, you know, back nineteen seventy, it would be not a nickel per bottle, it'd be thirty two cents right now. So.
Never takes to get people to bring their bottles back instead of dumping them on my roadside.
Well, last year when we did the plastic bag bill, or maybe it's already two years ago, uh, we looked at what would it take to get people to not just switch over to using disposable paper bags? And there were two proposals, charge a nickel a bag, charge a dime a bag. If you did a nickel a bag, roughly sixty percent of people would just go ahead and buy another paper bag. And then I don't know what they would do with it. If it, if you went up to a dime, uh, only ten percent would use a bag. They they would say, oh, I'm gonna, somehow a dime was a trigger. They got more people saying, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna change my habits, I'm gonna carry a bag to the store. And uh, the transition was remarkably uh smooth and easy, uh, even though we put in that dime, which was a floor fight amazingly, but such is life in the legislature.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, next we have Linda.
Thank you. Um, I think you all know that um I'm a board member of the Turning Point Center in Addison County. And um, I'm wondering if there's a way that you can help Vermont to improve their addiction treatment and rehabilitation. Currently Medicaid pays for only two weeks of treatment and rehab. This is residential. And this is not enough. So what we're having is these people going in for two weeks, going out, going in, going out, going in. It doesn't do any good. It totally wastes money. And yet New York and New Hampshire at least is up to a month that they can stay in rehab. But we only have two weeks and it really needs to be looked at and especially since you know, the opioid crisis is increasing, the isolation gets more people on it. And so anyways, is there any way that we can change that? I I have no idea, but asking for your help.
Yeah, thank you, Linda, for that question. Um, the, I believe, and Mike actually might know, so I'll that there's a House bill related to substance use um uh services. Is that true, Mike? I see him nodding. So um, that, when that bill comes over to the Senate, I don't know what's in it because I've been focusing on on our our Senate bills. But that would be an opportunity to look at that issue um and see uh if there's a way we can increase the the reimbursement for um that type for the inpatient services. We, we do, we have also talked about increasing um potentially increasing uh support for the Blueprint for Health, which does the hub and spoke system for um helping people who are um experiencing substance use uh issues, including the M A T, medical um
assisted.
Assisted uh treatment. I was mixing it up with medical aid and dying and I was like, I know that's wrong um in my head. So uh, yeah, I think there's going to be a bill in the second half in the session that will have an opportunity. And I'm not sure what the House has already done, but I can, um, if you get back to me in a few weeks, I might have more information for you.
So it's residential that I'm looking at.
Residential, okay.
Not inpatient in a hospital, residential.
Yeah.
Like Valley Vista is, um, we have two of them. Actually, that's about it for public.
Right. Right now, the issue for a lot of those um inpatient anything is um spots, uh beds open um and staffing. Um, so a lot of that is making it really, really hard to provide the services because there's not sufficient staffing because of the workforce shortages across um all sectors. But it's, it's really impacting healthcare sectors severely. So, but um, I will let you know when I have more information on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Linda.
And next we have Barb.
Great, thank you so much. Um, this is for Ruth. Um, in the beginning, you mentioned um student of mental health. Bill, I think you said that passed and I'd love to learn a little bit more. I've been um subbing since um probably mid-November. And in several of our schools, um, moms, as well as our elementary schools. And it's amazing how much um I've seen as far as mental health issues. Um, our kids are really suffering. Even the real young ones, um, all of a sudden they'll just have a meltdown um in a classroom. And the, really, our education, you know, the way we educate, we're just not equipped to handle that. And really am concerned about what's going to happen to these children and this could be a long lasting impact on their lives. So very interested in what the bill is that you just um passed that has crossed over or will cross over.
Okay, thanks Barb for that question. Um, we actually have not yet passed a bill. Um, we're working on it still. But there are two sort of two parts that I want to address. In the budget bill, which is currently in the House, people keep moving, so now I can't find you on my screen, but um, there you are, thank you. The the budget bill, um, we will be increasing the reimbursement level um rate for um the the DAs, the um designated mental health agencies across the state, which in Addison County is, as you know, is the Counseling Services of Addison County. I don't know what the rate is that the this is in the House bill at the the budget at this point. I know that the designated agencies have asked for a ten percent increase in their Medicaid reimbursement rate. Um, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to give them the full ten percent, but I know that everybody's committed to increasing their rate. And that will really help schools because most of the mental health counselors in schools are actually staff of designated agencies. So they're school-based counselors that are employed by CSAC and then work in our local schools. Um, and that will provide more funding for our mental health agencies to be able to support schools. The bill, so that's one piece of it. Um, and when the budget comes over to the Senate, I'll have a better idea of where we're at at that point. And I know the Health and Welfare Committee will be advocating for for making sure we have as much as we can afford in the budget. And one of the problems right now, I know everyone thinks we have a lot of money, but that is an ongoing expense. And most of the money we have is a one-time pot of money. So we have to be able to really en- ensure that um we're budgeting our ongoing funding in a sustainable way. So uh, that's what we're struggling with, with the the support for our designated agencies. The bill that we're, we're working on in the Senate has evolved quite significantly. And it sort of started out as a mental health planning bill and then it has moved into a student mental health bill. Currently, right now, it's actually focused on after-school and summer programs. I'm trying to shift the focus more to it, to in-school um and school-based services because not all of our schools, even in this county, but certainly across the state, not all of our schools have school-based mental health clinicians in them. And um, I met yesterday with um the care partners um and our our local CSAC people about what we could do to collaborate at the state level to make sure that there's a system in place to ensure that there are relationships built with local schools and their designated agencies to be able to provide those services. And so it's still work in progress at this point. Um, but hopefully we, as Senator Bray said, we have one more week to pass bills out of committee. So hopefully we will get it finalized next week. Um, and yeah.
What's the bill number?
It's um S one ninety seven, but if you look at it right now, it doesn't look, it's really not complete.
No, just so I can, you know, watch it. That'd be awesome.
Sure, of course. Yeah, thank you.
Um, can I toss in a little PSA here on bills and following bills? Because it's tricky, you know, a bill is introduced. Senator Hardy was just mentioning, a bill is introduced can be such a long way away from where we currently are two months into the session. And it's not always easy to find, you can keep up though with the changes. So if you go to a committee's homepage and there is a tab in the center block that says bill. And then when you click on that tab, you'll see a list of every bill in the committee. And if you click on the bill itself, there's, it brings up another window. And in that window is this, there's a, there's always a folder named drafts, amendments and legal documents. So when you go to that drafts button, that tab, you'll get to see the most current version. And so it's uh, it's very helpful to everyone to be able to find what the current version is and, but it takes a little practice to learn how to get there because it takes like three or four clicks. So anyway, it's homepage, the bill tab. Under the bill tab, you'll find a, another sub tab that tells you drafts. That's my PSA for today.
Thank you. Um, next on our list is Darla and then I think we'll wrap up with Carolyn and then Roger.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, Darla Sedical here. I live in Bristol. I was encouraged to come tonight and and talk to you folks about um by Sue White and Cheryl Mitchell to ask for some support or continued support for the Early Childhood Leadership Institute. I'm a graduate of that program from twenty eighteen. It was instrumental in the work that I do now. I I came across that training as I was transitioning from a long career and here in Bristol as the Recreation Director and went to work for Building Bright Futures, um, which you guys know intimately well and popular. So um, with that, the networking that happened through that um six-month period of taking that class, the information that was gleaned from that, the knowledge base that I was able to to acquire, the level of confidence and um just all of the resources that were available to me through that class, through presenters like Riva Kuzno and Hal Colson, uh, really changed the trajectory of my career and how I approach it, also gave me the Also gave me the confidence to run for Select Board here in Bristol. Um, I was elected two years ago and just recently re-elected, so I feel like I'm on a good path. Um, but I really would love to see continued support of that, that program. It was, it was really life-changing for me in a number of ways. Um, especially the work that Hal Colson did with our program and talking to us about equity and, and how real, how Vermonters are affected by this. I, at the time, had this euphoric idea that because I treated everyone the same, that that was okay, and that's how I should do that. And I learned a lot from Hal and about his experiences and his family's experiences. Um, so I would just, I'd just like to speak in, in, um, in support of that program and ask for your continued support there as well. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Darla. Um, you're the second person today to who, uh, pitched that program to me. I know it well, that, um, I am a Vermont, uh, uh, Leadership Institute, as is Senator Bray, um, graduate. And uh, we will have childcare bills in the second part of the session. Um, and I will see if there is a way to sort of add that in as a, as an option. That, as you probably know, we have provided a lot of support for continuing education for childcare providers. And hopefully, we can insert that in. If I find an opportunity, I will try.
Thanks so much. The, the breadth of folks that, that attended that class with me was remarkable. I, I still see those, um, yeah, I have those connections and they, and they really are meaningful in, in my work, so.
Thanks.
So Darla, I have a really quick question. Um, so that's operated by the Snelling Center for Government, correct?
Correct.
And I don't know if we give them a grant, at least for the program that Ruth and I went through, Vermont Leadership Institute. I don't know about the, the education version. Do you know if there's any kind of state funding that goes to them to run that program?
I believe there's a basic amount of funding that was, that was funneled to them. I'm not sure the path that it takes. Um, and Cheryl Mitchell would be a great contact. She can tell you the ins and outs of that for sure.
Okay, okay. Well, thanks for, thanks for pitching it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you for your work as well.
Okay, next we have Carolyn.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Keebler. I live in Middlebury. And um, first, I just want to thank Ruth and Chris for working so hard for all of us and listening to us here tonight. Um, and for your support also of the Environmental Justice Bill. I was really excited that S-148 has, seems to have been doing well, um, going through. And I think that's gonna go a long way to making some of these energy benefits available to more people in Vermont. So that's really great. Um, and I'm wondering, oh, also the weatherization, that sounds great, too, um, that you're expanding the weatherization program. I think it's huge, and for all the reasons you talked about, Chris, I think it's really important. So um, I'm excited to see that getting to be more available for more people. Um, and I guess one of the other things I wanted to ask about was this um, bill called S-232, um, the Renewable Energy Standards Bill. I'm not really sure if that's, um, if there's anything new going on with that. I might not have looked at the site very well. I only saw it as introduced and had some concerns about the way that energy is being accounted for, what's being called renewable, and whether it's really going to help us with our greenhouse gas emissions and um, protecting our ecosystems, or if it's just um, going to allow us to keep using hydro Quebec and um, sort of other energy sources that aren't really all that helpful when it comes to climate change. So I wonder if you could speak about S-232 a little bit.
Sure. So um, this could be a, a black hole of wonkiness, but I'm gonna avoid that. Um, the, the short of it with S-232 is the proposal in it. Um, and I'll, I'll get, I'll give the punchline. I'd say right now, that bill is not going to move. And because there's, uh, there's a conflict that is brought up. And that is, it says for our Renewable Energy Standard, that right now, so Vermont has the cleanest grid in the United States, by virtue of the fact that we have, in a stepwise progression, told utilities they have to have a larger and larger percentage of renewable energy in their portfolio. So right now, uh, in, on average in Vermont, sixty-three percent of the energy that's on our grid is renewable. But three utilities, Burlington Electric, Washington Electric, and Swan Electric are actually at a hundred percent renewable already. So the importance of all that is, people know is if we're talking about using electricity more and more to heat our homes, like cold climate heat pumps, or uh, uh, heat pump hot water heaters, or for transportation, like electric vehicles, plug-in electrics, we don't, we want to be drawing clean power out of a clean grid to do that. Otherwise, we're kind of kidding ourselves about what we're getting done. So this picked up the pace on our renewed, our renewable portfolio that every utility had to have. And it said, let's get to a hundred percent by 2030. Um, so actually, the utilities were supportive of that. Tier two in our Renewable Energy Standard is how much energy must be produced in-state renewably of that hun, whatever percent we're aiming for. And the current law says ten percent has to be produced in-state. Um, the renewable energy um, uh, industry in the state of Vermont, primarily solar, said we'd like to have a larger slice of the pie and um, make that twenty percent. Uh, so there was, basically, the, there's a little bit of a back and forth. Utilities would like to say, we are happy to buy a hundred percent renewable, but we want to go to the market and find the least expensive version, because that helps us keep our rates down. The renewable industry in Vermont said, well, there's some issues with the way you're doing your math and the quality of that renewable power. Let's move our percentage up. They haven't seen eye to eye yet, and I'm trying to turn this into a, a formal proceeding at the PUC. So we'll have expert, non-legislative analysis that will look at the costs and benefits of different ways of building a clean portfolio for the state of Vermont. And um, remarkably, even the idea that we'll study it together is proving contentious. But I would still like to get that done, because otherwise, this question will stay on the table and we won't have good information to sort it out yet again next year. And this is already three years running. I've been trying to help us nudge this forward. So it's a good question, and I'll, I think I've probably dipped into the wonky zone a little more than the average person wants to hear about, but um, that's what's going on there.
Well, that's what we're here for, the wonky zone. So um, appreciate it. I'll try to process that and um, hopefully, the solar people will win this one. So thanks a lot.
I'm happy to talk with you further, if you want to follow up off, after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we will, uh, end with our last question from Roger. Thank you to everyone who waited patiently.
Okay, thanks. Um, thank you, um, Senator Bray and Senator Hardy. Appreciate um, your time and also the effort that you've brought to climate-related issues in the Senate. Caroline basically asked my question about the Renewable Energy Standard. Um, and I, as much as I love the, the wonkiness, I will retract it, except to say that um, uh, does it seem a bit of an overstatement to even say that utilities have reached a hundred percent renewable, given that, um, a lot, a lot of that is coming from um, out-of-state generation, from large-scale hydropower? And is it possible, like, to sort of develop a language that accounts for the, you know, the impact of hydro Quebec, like, from the get-go as we go forward with the notion of standards?
Right. Well, you know, one of the things, so that's a good question, and it's really gonna be a long. This is why I actually want to have a full legal proceeding, because then all the parties who have questions and different points of view can express them in a public format. So we'll have transparency. We'll be able to weigh out the pros and cons, you know? For instance, on hydro Quebec, the, the, the most damning thing I hear is, well, they flooded a tremendous amount of land, so there were impact on indigenous peoples. Um, and that that flooding is actually doing things like releasing um, CO2 into the atmosphere by virtue of, like, the accelerated breakdown of uh, of organic materials that were flooded. Um, it's not, it's not, some people say it's not as clean as, you know, others are representing it to be. So my, my sense is that we just need to let the chips fall where they may and get our facts and science straight. Because as legislators, we, we have a fiduciary responsibility to people. We, we need to get to the facts, not just operate on opinions. And so um, it's, I, I hope that before we go home, I can um, cajole, or whatever it takes, uh, people into committing to a full, fair, and public review of the issues, so that the next legislature can convene and make progress on this issue, which has run aground for three years at a time where we really can't afford to lose any more time on making more progress on climate change.
Great. Uh, thank you so much, everyone who asked a question, and thank you all for being here. Uh, senators, if you'd like to give some wrap-up words, um, everyone have a great night. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you all for being here. Um, we both are accessible via email. rhardy@ledge.state.vt.us and cbray@the same thing. And um, very happy to see all of you, and hopefully, we can do another one of these later in the session. Um, and uh, please reach out if you have further questions and watch us on YouTube still.
All right. I think, I'm hoping everyone has a more exciting life than watching us on YouTube. If we are so inclined, we, we are on the air every day, so almost. Great to see you all. And uh, you know, this has been fun. I, I hope we do it actually again, even once we go back uh, in person. The, this is a great way for people to be able to get together without having to get your car, drive to Montpelier, or whatever. So, yeah, thanks again to Sally for setting this up for Senator Hardy and me.
Yeah, thanks, Sally. Have a good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Great.